We're going to call to order the 6:00 PM meeting of the regular meeting of the City Council, the city of Two Harbors, it's roughly 6:10. Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Here.
Klauser?
Here.
Renwald?
Here.
Swanson? Passy? Erickson? Rennen?
Here. Pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to request that we add new business number four. Consider authorizing Bolden Link to prepare preliminary design concepts for two tunnels to move ATV and snowmobile traffic across Highway 61 at the east and west ends of town for an amount not to exceed $50,000.
Okay. If that is all, then for a motion to approve the agenda this evening. So.
Sorry.
Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Klauser?
Yes.
Renwald?
Yes.
Rennen?
Yes. All right. We're going to have our appearances now. We will keep the same veneers our appearances have been lately. There will be three minutes. You cannot yield your time to anyone else. All right. First up, and I'll also add, please do not try and talk about any kind of city employee or their performance. We'll start off with Paul Iverson, 809 Third Avenue, in regards to expenses for attorney's fees related to the lawsuit. Go ahead, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. -- is this on?
Uh, no. It's not.
Paul Iverson, 809 Third Avenue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I approached the council two weeks ago asking for verbal reports on legal costs of attorneys due in costly concerning what many consider a frivolous lawsuit by Mr. Jezerski and those against the city and certain employees. If the city can't produce this information at this meeting, I would hope they could produce it at possibly the July 11th meeting. Citizens deserve to know this information without having to do a data request. The council should remember that there's a real decent chance in this case that all the plaintiffs in this lawsuit reside outside of city limits. When you got people doing this anonymously, you don't really know what's going on. So there's no reason I can see why there couldn't be such a report. And I could -- I hope that there could be a motion on this tonight to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Miranda, did you have a report this evening?
Yeah, I apologize. I wasn't at the last meeting, but I did know I did have a request from one of the counselors and did know of Paul's request. And I do not have attorney -- I mean, butcher it, but not one.
No.
I do not have his invoice yet. I have not received one. But one from Mr. Costley for recall of litigation was -- it has up to this date has been $6,240.
Thank you, Miranda. Next up, we have Lisa Middling, Ninth, 1503 Seventh Avenue, in regards to THETA and committee appointments.
Yes, actually, I live at 3452 Drummond Grade. My business is at 1503 Seventh Avenue. Thank you to the council for the time to speak. So in hopes that Mayor Swanson will resign for the best of our community, I'd like to address this conference of interest project literally on the THETA commission. Everybody wants to meet the mayor. It's usually the biggest cheerleader of the town. I remember meeting Wayne Sletton when we first moved into Two Harbors back in 1988. We've heard from Brian Enson, who was excited for the opportunity to meet the mayor. It's often the first thing the Chamber of Commerce says when you express an interest in moving or starting a business in Two Harbors is got to meet the mayor. I've learned about several businesses that wanted to move to Two Harbors. Both were recommended to meet the mayor, then the mayor pivots and asks them to sign on to Garage Starts. I've learned about a nonprofit in the area that was thrilled when the mayor Swanson showed up at their event. Maybe he advocated for them with the legislature. No, he was there to pitch for Garage Starts to fundraise for them. Now let's look at THETA. The mayor appoints the commissioners, who are approved by the council. Two city counselors can serve on the commission. A Lake County Commissioner can possibly serve after that, depending on if there's a Lake County Commissioner. On the board, four or five citizens in the 55616 zip code can be chosen to round out the board at seven. A year ago, the THETA board had its meetings. Mayor Swanson, a Garage Starts employee, a pure-driven employee, Council Renwald, and a citizen. Last October, when the commission was down one pure-driven employee but up one citizen, city planner servants recommended that THETA contract the Small Business Development Center. If THETA paid SBDC an annual fee, they'd be a free public service to help businesses and developers get the projects and plans ready for the city. They provided this service to other communities in the region and are underwritten by the SBA and the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development. One of the commission members expressed that SBDC competes with the mayor's business, Garage Starts. They decided to table the matter for the next meeting. The next THETA meeting on January 11th, 2022, was Mr. Owen's Underwater Hotel. No sign of the SBDC. THETA hasn't meant since. I know of at least four people that have applied to be on the THETA commission. We need robust committees and commissions filled with a variety of citizens who are passionate to do the work to move the city's business forward and make life better for all citizens. But the mayor either can't or won't put forward people for these roles. Maybe he's too busy with all of his other problems and issues. Maybe they aren't his employees or people he can influence. The mayor, who claims he loves the city, is in the way of the city. The unanimous vote of the city council asking him to resign says that although he still has a job, make no mistake, he's been fired. No one wants to work with him. He has lost the ability to lead. I recommend that the city council remove or limit him from any city committee or commission and place his place where any place he has a vote. How can we get anything down when he's still the elephant in the room even when his chair is empty? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Up next, we have Jean Sewell, correct? Executive Director of North Shore Horizons, in regards to public appearances at city council meetings.
Thank you. North Shore Horizons does not take a position regarding most city business. We are compelled, however, to address the arbitrary decision to refuse voice to sexual assault victims. We are not here to shame. We are here to offer education and support. We have heard more than once that allowing victims to speak would do no good. Fortunately, none of us are in a position to determine the value of one another's words. Character has always been a valid piece of information when determining a candidate's suitability for office. Many have addressed character in this room without issue. Your constituents have a right to hear about character. It is an inherent part of folding public office. We have heard dozens of people share their stories in this room, current and past stories, which brings up very real legal issues regarding the denial. But because a topic might be uncomfortable for you, it's merely a challenge for you to educate yourself and bring comfort to uncomfortable places. Be an example to us. Sexual assault is not a private or personal issue. It is an epidemic. It is a crime. Every time a victim is shut down, we create space for more assaults and assure that our sons and daughters will stay silent when they are victims. I know that each of you would fight for their right to tell their story. Victims are shut out of the meeting media by perpetrators with means by sending cease and desist letters and threatening lawsuits, and now they have been shut out by you. A group with power silencing survivors, just like perpetrators use their power to silence victims. I know that it was not your intention of any of you to revictimize those that are already hurting. I don't believe that's who you are. Please take advantage, though, of your local and regional professionals and resources for you to access confidential education about the personal and public implications of your decision. In addition, those resources have unlimited access to state-sponsored attorneys that can help to guide you in your decision-making. It is our mission to provide confidential, nonjudgmental, and free education and support to anyone facing situations involving sexual assault and domestic violence. You didn't have to do it alone. Show your constituents and your children and grandchildren that you care about them and their safety. You can actually help prevent future sexual assaults and support the healing of those already victimized by finding your own voice. Reach out to the survivors, acknowledge the pain caused by turning them away, and let them have their three minutes. Right now, you have the chance to highlight your own character, to admit your mistakes and remedy them. There have been a lot of people here asking for just that over the past several months, and they have been repeatedly disappointed. You can be the example and the light in what's become a very dark place. No one has that power but you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Brian Enson, 287 East First Street, Ninth River, in regards to Mayor Swanson's abuse of public confidence.
Hi, I'm Brian Enson, 287 East First Street, Ninth River. I want to start off saying that I do understand a little bit about what Chris's thoughts are in being a visionary. I myself have built a multimillion-dollar veterinary company out of components or devices being thrown away. You ever seen advertising in elevators at apartment buildings? I did that. Must be in the water because I'm not unique. He's not unique. None of us are really that unique. Tall ships guy, he's not. He's doing a job. He likes what he does. We do what we like. Visionaries in the definition that we had received a couple times probably are those that build model airplanes out of Balsa, that build logging motors, that really pursue something they enjoy. They work hard at it and they drive benefit from it. The difference is that we don't have to tell people that we're visionaries. They don't care. We just work hard. We're humble and appreciative of the outcome. In a prior council meeting, Chris said, "That's the way business works, Mr. Enson." Kind of ticked me off because that's not how business works, especially when using your position to gain favor or personal advantage through information you may derive. My era, an arctic encounter that day when I met with Chris, and I think he'd agree, was not to insist upon signing an NDA. Just mentioning it wasn't enough. And being chuckled at before mentioning it was kind of humbling in itself. That meeting surrounded or concerned loose fish. I think everybody can relate to that. It's an emotional topic. It's relatable. For me, it wasn't a dream. It was an opportunity to recognize the heritage I came from come from. Fishing village and relatives, friends, neighbors grew up doing that. And it was a way to pay back and have some fun doing it. Not going to blabber all at points. People have read things in the press and formed their own opinions. But I'm not saying that loose fish interaction is old news because it's not. It's relevant. What you did yesterday, the day before, 20 years ago, is relevant to today. It speaks to character. It speaks to the way you conduct business. What I'd like to note is the lack of honesty. When you look at that whole situation, the narrative keeps on changing. It was for an ice cream shop. It was for this. It was for that. It was for my wife. It was for my daughter. It was for -- you can't keep track of it. First time.
Sorry, sir.
I had so much more to offer.
Next, we have Deanne Royce, 419 Eleventh Avenue, in regards to tall ships.
Deanne, this is 419. I started out with things written down, but I just have to go for my heart and my experiences in living in many communities that were--
Pull the mic down, Robert.
Yes, I am a little mom-tighty. I have lived in communities larger than this, but not large communities, not considered like Duluth. And they will put on events, great events. But this is way out of league for what this community is and the people that live here. You know, Minnesota, people come here for the quaintness of it, not just for the biggest and the brightest and the, you know, all the stars. If that's what you have, that the people that live here and pay taxes already have to support, I have to question my wisdom in owning here. I didn't expect it to be like this. Most people struggle to even afford a house and to have to pay taxes or to pay for events that are way above what this community, obviously, the personnel can't handle. And I know that's very true. I just feel that it's way unrealistic and you got sold a bill with. I grew up in the county seats. I've always lived in county seats. My family worked in the county seats and in the police, so I know how the insides work. Nobody in the communities that I lived in that were bigger than this, that were on lakes, every single one of them would have ever attempted. We're not Duluth. And the people that live here don't want to have to support and pay for something that Duluth can do. Just even looking at the police saying, "When whoever is here," I'm sorry, I can't remember names. This is, says he, Philadelphia 17,000 law. It's going to be more here. And it's not. We have, it's just a burden to the people. And I know just from the events I've been here, the people say, "Boy, we've got to work all these. We've got to work all these. There aren't enough of us to do all the work, just the community members." So I guess that's my biggest concern, and I think it's really sad. I thought it was an quaint little nice little town that had some great things and great people, and everybody's active, but to try to play Hollywood, it's way out of whack. It's way out of whack. And it's hurting everybody. It's hurting everybody. Look at how everybody's trying to scramble. I just, I don't know. I just think everybody's trying to be more than what is realistic. And the people that come to Two Harbors, a lot of my friends, my family, my daughters, people are lawyers and they like the quaintness. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to administrative reports. Since our city engineer did not have time in the last meeting, I will not give any opportunity to give us a report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a handful of items on your agenda this evening related to a couple of bigger topics. So three of the items are related to the 2021-2022 street project, construction. So I'll cover that project, but we'll hit those three items. First of all, under Communications, I think it's Communication Number Three, is the update on the construction. Just a quick update on the construction. All the utility and street-based work on Fifth Avenue west of Eighth Street is done. They're ready for the concrete work, but they're waiting until they bring their concrete crew to the fifth street, excuse me, Fifth Avenue, Sixth Avenue at the same time. So concrete work will probably be coming later in July. Sixth Avenue, the water improvements are done for watering. Sanitary sewer work began last week. The utility work between the sewer and then the internal services should be hopefully completed by the end of this week, and then they'll start street-based work next week. The other piece of work that's done, the Minnehaha School Sewer Service, you recall we had to go in and make an extra repair there. That work did happen. It has two components, external work off the street and the internal plumbing. The external work in the street was done between June 13th and June 15th. It's been reviewed by the state. They've signed off on it, so they're good with it. The internal plumbing started last Thursday, should be finished up this week. Once that's finished, they'll schedule an inspection and get the state plumbing inspector to certify that as well, and then we'll complete that work. As far as other items related to the project, Consent Agenda Number 11 is the pay request for the last two weeks' worth of work on the project. Summarized in your packet, the total amount due to contractor on this request is $112,208.16, and that includes the standard 5% retention. So that item is on your consent agenda for consideration. And then on Consent Agenda Number 11 for consideration is the change order related to the Minnehaha School Sewer Service. We discussed this in detail at the last council meeting. In essence, we had to go back and reconnect an additional sewer service to the school. It involves external work in Fourth Avenue and some internal plumbing. The total, Lake County has prepared, Lake County is the owner of the contract, so they prepared the change order. They agreed with the contractor. Contractor has signed off to indicate their agreement. The total amount of the change order is $51,640, which is consistent with the number that we had presented at the last council meeting. The city's share of that cost would be 25%, which is estimated at about $13,275. And again, the change order is presented for your approval tonight. It's based on the estimated measurements. Once the work is complete, the final measurements will come back in and will be rolled in for the next pay request when that work is complete. So that item is on your agenda, under Consent Agenda Number 11 for approval. Those are the only two action items on that project. Before I get into the next project, I will stop there to see if you have any questions on the 2021-2022 street project. All right. And the other item I have is, this is a Lake County project, County State Aid Highway 26, which is 11th Street over by the intersection by Quick Trip and Super 1. It goes north, and then it turns east and becomes 20th Avenue and ties back into Fourth Street up by the public workshop. The county has had in their five-year plan to resurface this road, and they had targeted the year 2022 to do that. They've put together the plans. The plan, it does have funding from the state through the state aid account and through local road improvement program, which is administered by MINDOT. Because it's within municipal boundary of Two Harbors, the county needs a resolution from the city council approving the plans before MINDOT will authorize the work to be bid and will secure the funding for the project. So the county's prepared the plans. They've submitted them to the city. It's under your agenda under Communication Number Four and also under Consent Agenda Item Number Eight. I put a summary memo together, and I included about eight sheets from the plan. The plan's about 50 pages long in total. I included kind of the key pages for you. Just a quick overview of what they're going to do. They're basically just going to mill off the top couple inches of the blacktop on the road and put down 3.75 inches of new blacktop, reestablish a good crown on the roadway. They'll also replace the guardrails up by the bridge where the road goes over the railroad crossing. They'll do improvements to the trails where the trails connecting with the road. They'll redo the ramps in order to bring them all up to compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. And then they'll do a little bit of storm sewer work, not very much, but the part of the most notable one for the cities is right at the main entrance into the commercial complex on the east side of the over Super 1 is, there's an area that tends to hold water, and they're putting in a subdrain there, which should help to reduce any water issues in that intersection. Other than that, they'll be striping them, putting the road back. They're going to change the configuration so it's two lanes with a center left turn lane. And then at August Umtevet Boulevard, they're going to change the configuration there a little bit. Right now, as you, if you drive it, it's, there's essentially two lanes. It's a, the left lane is a prun lane, which you can also turn out of, and then the right lane is a bypass lane in case somebody stopped waiting to make a turn. They're going to change it and just make that a dedicated left turn and make the right lane just a straight prun, just to clean up that intersection. So that's what they'll do when they reput the pavement markings down there. And they're also going to enlarge the radii at that intersection a little bit because of the trucks, when they make that turn, they tend to hop the curb and beat up the vegetation. So they're just going to widen out those radii and make that intersection function a little better. Those are the main elements as far as, you know, what's going to be of most interest to the city. The estimated project cost at the time, the county had the public meeting on this, which was a few months ago, was $1.3 million. That project is 100% funded by the state of Minnesota through the state aid funds and through the local improvement project. So there is zero cost to the city for this construction project, which is a nice change. But as I mentioned, MINDOT does, as part of their approval process of the plans, require that the city council in the municipality where the project is located approve a resolution to approve the plans. So that resolution is in your packet this evening. I would be glad to try and answer any questions you may have on that project.
Go ahead, Robert.
Joe, do we have a timeline on this project?
Oh, good question, yes. It is going to be done yet this year. They're hoping to get bids. Once we get the resolution here, submit that to MINDOT. We'll clarify any other comments MINDOT has had on the plans. MINDOT will approve it, and the county can advertise it, get bids yet this summer, and I would guess they'll probably be building it like in September.
September sounds great, thanks.
All right. Any other issues?
Nope. And then just new business number four, which we've already talked about. And the only thing I would say about that is it's totally the council's decision. It's just, if, in order to keep the option open to have it be part of MINDOT's project, we would need to do preliminary engineering now. If we don't, we can do it later. I mean, the opportunity will be there later, it's just that it would have to be a separate stand-alone city project at that point. So that's the point is, you know, I guess the practicality was on, do you want to invest $50,000 now to keep the option open for having a MINDOT project to pursue and funding for that? Or would you rather not spend the $50,000 now and think about it more, knowing that at that time it would be a stand-alone city project?
Any questions on that? All right. Thank you, Joe. Move on to committee reports. We have the Utilities Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Utilities, on the 15th of June, we reviewed some more design aspects for the sewage treatment plant, and then we had discussion regarding, oh my gosh, I just remembered my hat. I'm so sorry. Significant user, thank you. Couldn't get there. I could see it. I couldn't get it out of my mouth. Significant user agreement, and that was pretty much all we discussed.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Chair, can I just mention, too, that we're hoping that, hopefully, by the next city council meeting, we should have a board put together somehow so that counselors can look at some of the design things that we had to pick out, which I had no idea. We had to pick out like colors of concrete and all that other good stuff. But anyway, Ben and I and the mayor was in on a couple of those conversations. But anyway, they're going to do up a board so everybody can see what, where we have kind of like two different ideas, and then kind of let the rest of the council pick their top favorite. So it's not going to become just our decision. So thanks. And just on a side note, Luke said no hot pink. So I don't get a hot pink.
All right. Ed and the G Commission. Where did that meet? Public Affairs Committee.
In Public Affairs, we did meet on June 16th at 4:00 PM. We did talk about proposed changes to the city code regarding the citizen appointment to city boards and the commissions as far as from the mayor, or where do those come from, if counselors can suggest also and bring to light other names and suggestions as well. And then we did decide to refer to our attorney, Mr. Costley, and so he's going to get back to us with that. We consider proposed changes to the city code, changing the residency requirements for certain committees and commissions. There was some discussion on that. It was healthy discussion. Some of it, I felt like it didn't need to make a difference. Other ones, I could see where it was more weighted that folks should be in the 55616 zip code, or at least even in the city limits, depending on what commission or committee it was. So that was still under discussion. And then Neighborhood Revitalization Mini Grant, we do need to just set that one aside for a bit because we are still looking to see, I think we're going to wait a year, did we decide, Robert, or so, just to see if we can get someone who's more able to help make that happen. There was, you know, it just hasn't been a person who wants to help make that be a thing. And then on the car charging station at the RJ Hool, we're looking into that. I think we did bump that to Public Utilities and Public Works to see if we could get something like that started because electric cars are not going away. So it'd be good to have another station for charging. Robin, did I forget anything else?
I have my agenda here. Well, I was just going to mention that we did talk about people addressing the council. That was, that's, we put together some language that should be coming forward, and how much longer we're going to put our meetings out on Zoom. And at some point, that will probably go away because we're not required to do it. So that should be coming forward, and I was trying to think, I thought there was one other thing that I can't remember.
Zoom and then compensation for elected officials, we were looking at that.
Oh yeah, we kind of sent that to finance, so. Anyway, it was, it was a long but fruitful meeting.
So we should be seeing some language soon about people addressing the council from public.
I thought it should be coming, hopefully by next meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And now the liquor store ad hoc committee, Jackie, if you could do that soon.
As we all just met recently, but then we did meet as the ad hoc committee. There is the liquor store with the purchase of the building right next to the parking lot, and then looking to the next building next to it by the Blackwoods, and we've also been looking at the property out near Culvers. And I think it's going to be where, we're going to just kind of wait and see what we can do with the property out near Culvers, if that is something that we can and want to do, because for what we're looking at accomplishing as far as more parking and more square footage, that's probably the best option. And I think if we did have even the current space plus the next two buildings, it's not going to really gain us that much. So that is where things are with the ad hoc liquor committee. We're looking still out by Culvers, and we'll see what we can come up with.
And I'll just mention on that too, after our ad hoc meeting last week, city staff did look into those buildings, those lots next to the liquor store, and they're actually roughly, what would you say, about half the size of a normal lot, a standard lot in the city to ours. So if we were to purchase that other house in between the house we currently own in Blackwoods, it wouldn't even give us, just under an acre. Or the total of, if we built a building to the scope that we are looking at and size, yeah, we'd only gain five parking spots. All right. Then I just wanted to mention also that the finance meeting did meet on last Monday, the 20th. The entire meeting was on the festival of sales and where the money could possibly come from, and for financing, you know, tremendous efforts that will need to be made for the festival. And we were, you know, moving forward on what staff has recommended as far as where our funding sources are currently at, and that's what we'll proxy you guys to. All right. Did I miss any other committee reports? Next, I have a resolution approving the consent agenda items. Patty, can I get you to read those items in, please?
Sure. Number one, approving minutes from the May 9th and 23rd and June 13th, 2022 regular city council meetings. Two, allowing claims against the city of Two Harbors repaid on June 28th, 2022. Three, approving payroll for the first half of June, 2022. Four, authorizing payment to Boltman Bank in the amount of $38,347.85 for engineering construction services from April 16th through May 13th, 2022 for the wastewater treatment plant project. Five, authorizing payment to Boltman Bank in the amount of $1,312.50 for engineering services from April 2nd through the 29th for GIS mapping updates, audit assistance with project information, and rustic creek construction plan review and comments. Six, authorizing payment to Boltman Bank in the amount of $1,947 for professional services for the 2023, 2024 street and alley improvement project from April 26th through the 29th of 2022. Seven, authorizing payment to Boltman Bank in the amount of $395.50 to provide professional services for the MINDOT Highway 61 reconstruction project. Eight, approving plans for resurfacing county stated Highway 26. Nine, authorizing payment in the amount of $1,500 to Northern Elite Epoxy for additional labor and materials for epoxy floor coating at the campground bathhouse for an amount of $6,000. Ten, authorizing payment to Lake County for pay application number 15 in the amount of $112,268 for the 2021, 2022 street improvement project. Eleven, authorizing change order number seven for the 2021, 2022 street improvement project for the Minnehaha School Sewer Service to increase the project cost by an amount of $51,640 with the city's share at $13,275. Twelve, accepting with regret the resignation of Samuel Martinin from the Charter Commission and authorizing a letter of appreciation for his service. Thirteen, certifying assessment against the property located at 515 10th Avenue for certain delinquent utility charges in the amount of $1,451. Fourteen, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver a grant agreement between the city of Two Harbors and Two Harbors Area Fund for extension of the grant deadline of the 7/31/2022 to November 1st, 2023 for the Two Harbors Trail Project due to project delays. Fifteen, approving applications for renewal of massage therapy licenses from Judy Wick and Amy Spees for 601 7th Avenue. Sixteen, approving special event permit of Carrie Hogenson for the Playball Minnesota Baseball Softball Clinic put on by the Minnesota Twins to be held at Odegaard Park on July 8th, 2022 from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Seventeen, moving forward with the Party in the Park event sponsored by the city to be held on August 28th, 2022 at Thomas Owens Banchel Park.
All right. Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Clasher?
Yes.
Brandwal?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Move on to communications. Patty, can you read those in too as well?
Certainly. Number one, a letter from Chuck Hayes, 1483 Summit Showers Drive, Burnsville, Minnesota, expressing his displeasure with the condition of city streets. Two, a note from Castle Danger Brewery expressing appreciation for working with them and approving their off-sale license so they could begin selling brawlers with one week, within one week of the adoption of the revised language. Three, a memorandum from Joe Rain, Boltman Bank, providing a status update on the 2021, 2022 street improvement project. Four, a memorandum from Joe Rain, Boltman Bank regarding Lake County, CASA 26, mail-in overlay project, and city approval of plans.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have unfinished business. Have a resolution authorizing a funding plan for recovery of city expenses associated with the Festival of Sales 2022.
Sold.
Discussion on this item. Go ahead, Counselor Clasher.
I feel it's kind of a disadvantage that the city council seems to be sitting in at this point. We certainly could have planned and prepared better for this event had we been apprised of all of it when it first started. And so now we're, again, as many have said to me, the ship has kind of sailed and we need to move forward. I am, I will accept this resolution as long as there are no dollars coming out of the general fund, and just to let the public know that even though the dollars are coming from an enterprise fund, that still funds that the city of Two Harbors could be using for other things. But that being said, we're kind of in a position where the commitments have been made, tickets have been sold. I think after this, there should be a long review of how the city of Two Harbors moves forward with future events like this, to make sure that we aren't caught behind the eight ball again. And I guess the other thing that I want to say is that I, I want people to know that the money that's being used, that the city is putting forward, is not for the Festival of Sales. The money that we're putting forward is money that will keep our community safe and our citizens safe and those visiting our community safe. And I just want to make that clear. But again, I'm really hoping that we can find some other funding sources and that we don't have to take money from those enterprise funds that are available to us because those monies can be used for other things for our community. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Clasher. Any other response from the council?
Mr. Chair, yeah, no, I think this is a great event, and I think that, you know, we did have a lot of time, but I feel like maybe some things could have been moved faster than what they did and how they happened. But I think this is going to be a great event. I'm excited for it. I think, you know, there are, there are some people in the community who are not. There are some who are, there are some who are indifferent. You're not going to get around that with any decision that you make. And I'm excited to have this happen, and I think we should throw in a little bit, we have not even looked at all the sources and possibilities that there are to help fund it. I don't know that it'll be as expensive as what it's been made out to be, and I think it's going to be a really great event. And there are so many communities, I've done research, I don't know if anyone else has done research as far as how these events affect other communities and municipalities, and they make a great positive impact, and many communities have them repeat because they like them so much. So I'm excited, and I think we should, you know, go to the county, see if maybe they have something, and look at other, other resources that we have, and be creative and think outside the box and be welcoming to it instead of dreading this event. I think it's going to be fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from the council? Staff? Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Clasher?
Yes.
Brandwal?
Yes.
Brennan?
All right. Move on to new business. New business item number one is a resolution to consider approving the request of Twin Courts Entertainment and Love and Lake County for a special event permit, which includes street closures and electrical connection for the Shenandoah Concert to be held on August 20th, 2022 in the parking lot located in the 500 block between South Avenue and the alley south of First Avenue, pending the receipt of approval of 75% of the affected property owners and authorization from Lake County for permission to use and conduct liquor sales on their property. So. Any discussion on this item? I just want to say, I think it's pretty cool that we're going to have a concert right downtown Two Harbors, so that's my support. I'll ask for a roll call.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Clasher?
Yes.
Brandwal?
Yes.
Brennan?
All right. New business item number two, a resolution considering, to consider authorizing a grant agreement between the city of Two Harbors and Love and Lake County for the purpose of providing funding assistance for certain costs associated with the 2022 Festival of Sales, which includes a city match in the amount of $50,000. So. Any discussion on this matter? No? All right. Basically, I would just like to say thank you to Love and Lake County for stepping up. That's really huge. Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Clasher?
Yes.
Brandwal?
Yes.
Brennan?
New business item number three is a motion authorizing the city attorney to draft an agreement with dry events requiring a payment bond covering reimbursement of expenses and payment of vendor fees and to provide indemnification for the city. Is there any discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And new business item number four. New business item number four is a consideration to authorize Boltman Bank to prepare preliminary design concepts for two tunnels, one on the west side of town, 14 by 14 inside diameter, and one on the east end of town, 12 by 12 inside diameter. These tunnels will be used by ATVs and snowmobiles for safety purposes.
I'll send it.
Discussion on this item?
I think if we look, I mean, excuse me.
Go ahead.
I think if we look back at a lot of the things that maybe Two Harbors wanted to do, be the energy or the waterfront, and we always look back and like, damn, we should have done that, and we didn't. And, and this is something that I think, you know what, let's do it, let's do the preliminary study, it's a safety thing, we know how many people are crossing that highway, you know, families, kids, strollers, snowmobiles, ATVs, and if we don't look at it now, then it's just going to get more and more expensive. And let's just do it, as long as MINDOT is going to be tearing it up anyway, we can find funds, you know, there are places to ask, and there are ways to find help to get it done, and it doesn't come straight out of, you know, just the city of Two Harbors. Let's do this, let's, let's get out of our own way, and let's do something really cool and make some cool tunnels that folks can use year round and get across that highway safely. That's how I feel. Thank you.
Go ahead, Marissa.
And Commissioner Hogenson was, had to leave, but earlier he was talking, and he did say that we definitely should reach out to Matt Houston because they are working, Lake County is working on this and support this project, as you know, Mr. servants had pointed out, and working with, you know, Jeff Anderson, who the city has hired, you know, to help the city seek out those dollars for this project as well. So I think a really good opportunity for collaboration with Lake County again.
Go ahead, Patty.
Just to be clear, I don't think though it included pedestrian traffic, is that correct, Jen?
No, because the MINDOT, the 2025 plan includes a 10-foot paved trail all the way from the scenic, all the way down to Burlington Station, and then there's also going to be sidewalks on the north side, the whole, the whole stretch as well. So this will just be for ATV and snowmobile.
Go ahead.
It's just my understanding that you can't have them in the same tunnel. It's just.
Correct.
You can't, but you need to read it. One other thing that I would like to add to that new business item is not to exceed $50,000. You both motion in the second, find that friendly. All right, thank you. Any other comment? Go ahead, Miles.
Yeah, I just, I mean, maybe even looking at one, I just think the price tag right now, I know that hasn't all been done yet, but that's, I'd hate to spend $50,000 on pre-engineering and like, we're not going to do it. People are upset about festival sales. I mean, we've done that with energy, we've had studies done. I'd hate to do a study and then be like, oh, no, we're not going to do it. Like, but I think we should know if we are going to do it for sure or not before we just be like, uh, maybe. That's just kind of where I stand. So I'd like to see the numbers lower than $50,000, like maybe, maybe one tunnel at a time, and I, I think the price tag that I've received so far is too much for me as well. But I mean, I'll support it right now, but I'm not comfortable with that $50,000 unless we're going to do it for sure. I just like it to be a little more clear, maybe we can be in public works and refer this to have more discussion before we just say go, go to the preliminary engineering decided.
And I'm just worried about the timetable of that.
Right, I understand that too.
And then one question that I have for maybe Jen or Joe is, would it be possible to make one of the tunnels an ATV and snowmobiles tunnel, the other one a pedestrian?
Well, MINDOT, the purpose of their project was not only, their goal is to make Highway 61 safer for pedestrians, car travel, and bicycles. So they have all of that covered. What they won't cover is the ATV and the snowmobiles. So we don't, so the pedestrians are good to go, everybody can bike, and the Gitchigami is going to connect all the way up to Flood Bay, they're taken care of, but it's the ATV and the snowmobiles. And Counselor Woodruff, the problem is that we're on a time limit for this, so we don't have time for this to go to committee. Joe is going to try to keep it under $50,000. Joe is gonna try to keep it under fifty thousand dollars, we just threw that out there just as a ballpark, so you have something. This doesn't mean that you're going to handle the project. It means we're, we don't know if we can do the project until we get the...
I understand all that, it's the fifty thousand dollars and then not doing it, it's not even something that we don't know if we're gonna do it or not. I understand all the, all the details of the project.
And there'll be other elements to that too, like if you can get bonding dollars as well, so even if you say we're gonna do it and we don't get the bonding dollars, you might not be able to do it anyways.
And I would just like to remind the council as well, what was it, two years ago, three years ago, how much did we spend on a preliminary? Was it five years, it couldn't have been five years ago, I was on the council.
Really?
Okay, so the, anyways, it was the, what, the thirteenth and fourteenth, or fourteenth and fifteenth?
Avenue.
Avenues. We spent tons of money on preliminary investigation and shelved it because it wasn't right.
So there's took it for four or five years, but, that's what I'm saying, that's, that's my whole concern.
I think any engineered industry can perform.
Or you know what I mean, in the preliminary, or the energy, we've done it over and over again, I hate spending money on when nothing comes through that, that's my concern.
Andrew, sign it off. Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second on the table. If there's no more discussion on that, anybody else? No? Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
No.
Clasher?
Yes.
Brannwald?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
All right. And, find Miranda here. I believe that was it. There's nothing else, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Clasher?
Yes.
Brannwald?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes, you're adjourned.